It's April 28th. This is Independent School District 832, the Mod Amedai Public School District, and this is a regular board meeting. Please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Roll call of attendance, please.
Aldana, he is absent. Julie McGraw.
Here.
Casey Stout.
Here.
Kevin Donovan.
Here.
Lucy Payne.
Here.
Kelly Regan, here.
Thank you, everyone. Okay, it's done. Next is the approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
By Julie.
Second.
Seconded by Kevin. Any discussion? All right, all those in favor, please say aye. Roll call vote, please.
Julie McGraw, aye. Casey Stout.
Aye.
Kevin Donovan. Lucy Payne.
Aye.
Kelly Regan, aye.
Approval of the consent agenda. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
By Julie.
Okay.
Seconded by Kevin. Any discussion? May have a roll call vote?
Julie McGraw, aye. Casey Stout.
Aye.
Kevin Donovan.
Aye.
Lucy Payne.
Aye.
Kelly Regan, aye.
Motion passes, thank you. And now we have presentations.
Yeah, and so we're going to start off with kind of a recap of what happened prior to our meeting. So prior to our meeting, we had our Zephyr Learning Showcase. And you can still kind of see remnants of it, but we had students from the middle school, high school, and OH come and share some of their passions, their interests, their learning. And we got an opportunity to walk around and talk to students. We learned a little bit about the microscope. I'm sorry, I'm looking in the areas, the microscopes over here. We heard from some History Day and a couple of them who are going to be finding out how they did at the state level this weekend. We have over here, and anyone, we could actually take them out into the hallway for those of you who aren't staying for the whole meeting. If you want to check out some QR codes, we have some students from Wildwood who were interviewed about their experience working with our high school students and in some read alouds there with our base students, one of whom is right here. And we had the cooking club in the back. So those of you who participated in, got a little bit of a little dinner this evening as well. So, and so this effort learning showcase was an opportunity for the board to be able to ask more questions than we would normally have if a student stood up and did a presentation. We got to talk to more students this way. And so what we thought we'd do is just have an opportunity for the for the board to just kind of reflect a little on what you learned today and and offer up a few comments for our students.
So what's that? Oh, Kevin.
Well, I thought it was just, it was wonderful, absolutely wonderful. And I would encourage more of this. I had occasion to look at the literacy over there with Wildwood and the work that Base is doing with those students, which is fantastic. I had a chance to look at the cooking club. Alice, are you a part of that? I think you are, right? And I can't say that I tried the blue juice, but I did have a piece of the cake. It was excellent. And I talked to this group of students doing the history project and very impressive, very impressive work. So I would love to see more of this happening. It's cool.
I'll just add on to that, sort of a yes and that I loved all of that. It was fun to see the students, see them, you know, work on their public speaking, being able to share a presentation with all of us. You know, they were passionate about what they were sharing and they were having a lot of fun. So the kids were having fun with the cooking club and I was their first victim of their blue juice and it was a lot of fun. And yeah, it was just great to see all of that. And I also loved, of course, the use of technology, being able to use the QR codes for the students that weren't here from Wildwood. And we could still see and hear their work. So it was really great. High energy. I love the high energy.
So I just think that this is why we all serve on the board and this is just the positive energy that keeps us, keeps us all going. So the more of that we see, the happier we all feel. It's all impressive, impressive work. So.
I thought it was really great to be able to get face to face with the students and them not have to present for us. It wasn't that high pressure scenario. I also was really impressed with the history project that it could be in a number of forms. So one of the ladies I talked to had created a website and she'd never created a website before. And I guess that's one of the options the History Day project allows, helps them with that, but she had to figure it out on her own. So not only was she learning history, but she learned how to set up a website as well as there were other forms to do it. But it was just really impressive to see that kind of initiative and that we, we have set that in our strategic plan that we want to see that kind of learning taking place, that people can pursue, students can pursue a different pathway, still learning the material, but in a way that really they find interesting. And it just, it really came together. So.
That's one of the things I love about History Day. I get kind of nerdy about History Day every time it comes around. But that's, that's one of the things I love about it is that students go so in depth into some area of interest, but it's still, you know, it's just really high level learning. And when you get to hear the kids, sorry, the students talk about what it is they're learning and why they chose the topic, it's, it's just awesome. I also, I don't know, do you remember looking in microscopes at onion skin and cells and all of that? I, and having to draw it. So this group back here actually can take the picture of it and put it right into a Google slide, which I don't know, for me, as somebody who has no skill in that drawing area, I thought that was fabulous as well. And one of the things I loved about this group back here, and I think it's worth a lot listening to if you get a chance, was that, I wonder if I wrote it down. Well, the first grader who said, or are these kindergarteners? These were kindergarteners? First and second, the first, it's probably a first grader who said what she liked most about working with the high school students. Again, one of them is here right now. I think it was that they, that they know, well, there was the one that talked about they know this much and you know this much. And so that's how much more they know. But there was another one who said that they also, they graduated from first grade already too. So that was another great thing about working with you. So anyway, so thanks for what you did with the students. They clearly very much enjoyed themselves. So that, and that partnership between the high school and Wildwood is pretty special too. So thanks for that.
Just to comment on that, I do really like that we had the opportunity to partner with Wildwood because I don't think, or like just other schools in general. We don't really get to do that often. So that was really fun. I love seeing like, I love seeing them and like seeing myself in them a lot. And then I also really, like, I think it's a really cool opportunity that middle schoolers are seeing some of the things that they're going to do when they get to high school and just be like, oh, what's that? And then when they get to the high school, they can recognize it and already know it. So I think it's just a really cool opportunity that we allow the different schools to interact in this kind of way.
When you were talking about the lab slides, you know, it made me think of the tech lobby and the first grader. Wasn't it a first grader who was, who was taking the screenshot and putting it in her digital iPad science notebook?
That's right.
It's pretty impressive. It's fun to see, fun to see that range. So.
Yes, one last comment that I think we have a future social studies teacher that was over here for the History Day project. As, as a former social studies teacher, I was trying to talk her into what a great path that was for a career. And she was just super excited about her project and said she wanted to dig deeper into it in college. So, so finding again, a passion about social studies. That was really fun to see.
Great way to see some of the great things we're doing. I think there's lots of other things. So I think we've got a lot of options ahead for.
We're going to do this next, next regular meeting.
And then we have Jason Miller coming for the Mod Amedai Middle School STEM Club Leaders Recognition.
And I think Tolu's comments about middle school students being able to see the high school students and what's to come, I think is a great lead up to what Jason has to share.
Absolutely. Thank you so much, members of the board and Superintendent Duffren. It is my distinct honor this evening to be able to introduce to you three absolutely just amazing students. Katherine Schneider, you can see their pictures on the board, or we can all stare at them sitting right here. Anna Baldoff and also Katherine Langell. And we, I have to say, for the past year, these three students have led and facilitated the work of our middle school STEM club. And I have to admit, they have been just absolute rock stars with the students. And Tolu, as you said, the, even at the middle level, the amount that our students look up to you and see you as leaders and mentors and strive to, to do the work that you do is such a huge and amazing impact. I mean, this year at the middle school, we've really been focused on building that strong student connectedness, having students enhance, you know, those opportunities around their passions, their aspirations. Seeing this unmet need, Katherine and Anna and Katherine had come and they, they sought me out. We had been already sort of undertaking some STEM challenges each month within the middle school and seeing that came to me and had this idea of could we expand the high school STEM club sort of to the middle school? Almost make us a satellite group, if you will, and be able to do something very similar with our students, kind of bridging those two different activities and those experiences. You know, and as somebody who loves to hear or ask the questions of students, not, you know, what did you do today? But actually, what did you make today? What did you create today? I jumped at that chance. I was like, absolutely. Yes. Can you start yesterday? And they took and just ran with it. And the comments that I hear from students all the time is about how much they enjoy the expertise, just the talent, the knowledge, the activities. You can see a quote from one of our students up on the screen right now about how, again, they can relate to you in different ways that they don't always relate to their teachers and seeing that. So again, these students have really brought that passion for science. And as a solid science teacher, I love it a lot. And engineering at the middle school. And our students are so fortunate to have the three of you as, as leaders of the club. And we just can't wait to see what's going to happen even next year and the years in the future. So if you'll please join me in honoring Katherine, Anna and Katherine for their leadership, dedication to learning, entrepreneurship and mentorship. Thank you so much. We do have some certificates for you. So if you wouldn't mind standing up, this is the first one I have Katherine Schneider. We'll come on over this way.
And we have a tradition, you have to get your picture taken.
Oh, boy.
Ready for Tolu, the student rep report?
Awesome. All right. Well, let's start at Wildwood. So on May 6th, we're going to have the spring fling. Second graders will also have an opportunity to visit OHA on May 17th for the next school year. And then the first graders will have a field trip to Gibbs Farm on May 23rd. At, oh, wait, I hope I said Wildwood because now we're going to, okay. At OHA, they just finished MCA assessments. The choir is rehearsing and will sing the national anthem at the Twins game on June 12th. Young authors groups and a young authors conference is coming up later in May. And again, the spring fling is happening on May 6th at Wildwood. At the middle school, MCA testing was this week for the middle schoolers. And there are several concerts, music concerts coming up. So the sixth grade band concert is May 2nd. The seventh grade band concert is May 3rd. Middle school jazz is May 5th. Seventh grade choir is May 16th, as well as the glee choir. And the sixth grade and eighth grade choir concerts are going to be later in the month. Okay, it's kind of a lot at the high school going on. So this is a quick note for Mr. Farmer. He is a science teacher at Mod Amedai and is also the teacher advisor of RWDC, Real World Design Challenge. So the Real World Design Challenge National Competition had two teams competing and earned the International Merit Award for Best Business Case Team Overview. And Team Zephyr Aerospace Products took third in the national competition. And this is the highest that they have ever placed. The Little Mermaid was supposed to happen. This was supposed to be opening night. But due to a mini COVID outbreak in their group, they have postponed it to the week of May 19th. I would still check it out. I have some great friends who are in that play and I'm really excited to go watch it. SLC has also been doing quite a bit. They created and hosted Kindness Week for the first time in the last two weeks. And then this week is also Mental Health Week. We had some amazing student speakers today. You know, just show off their bravery and go up there and talk about their mental health journeys. And from personal experience, it was awesome. And I really, really hope that SLC is like able to continue this in years coming. Celebration of Excellence was also last week honoring the top 10% of the senior class based on the GPA. The robotics team competed at the international competition on the U of M campus a few weeks ago. And then just a little, little thing, several students have been awarded a spot at the White Bear Center for the Arts Art Show. That's actually opening tonight and will go on until later in May. And similar with the writing contest, there are several students at Mod Amedai who have been awarded spots in that show. So.
Thank you. You have questions for Tolu? Okay, you covered it all. Thank you. Well done.
One of the, excuse me, one of, one of the Real World Design Challenge, I mean, you know, one of the schools that our team went up against was from China, correct? That's where DGID drones come from, of course. And I think that's what they used for the project. So anyway, very cool.
This is an international competition, so.
Hey, hey.
So I just have, and so I'm using this, is that right? This is going to work for me? Okay. So I just have a few things. I'm just going to do, once again, Tolu, you and I, for all this, every time I say, oh, Tolu covered this. I do have a couple of things that you don't have, but I have some things around the district. I'll just briefly highlight our 2021 graduation data. Just a, just a recap of where we are with the secondary schedule redesign and then legislative update, just briefly. I know we'll do a little bit more of that when you do your MSBA report as well. So around the district, there are the pictures of the people that Tolu referenced earlier for the Real World Design Challenge, both Team Cover View and Team Zap, one with the International Merit Award and the other was taking third in the national competition. You may have seen in the Star Tribune that the national merit finalists, the first round of national merit finalists were announced. And there were 15 so far in Minnesota. And one of them is our Anna Thompson, senior Anna Thompson. You may have seen her in Maps pictures as well. I mean, we've, we've been seeing Anna on and off again the past few years. Also, the, so a new program at Mod Amedai Middle School for next year is the web program, which is much like Link at the high school. And so the, the training is starting this week, I think, tomorrow maybe, with our seventh, seventh grade students being trained to be mentors at, when they are eighth grade, when they are eighth grade students to mentor the sixth graders coming in. So that's getting started soon and for next year. Just our graduation data, again, again, we're remaining stable around 97% and it continues to be among the highest in the state. I just want to thank again our teachers who have really had considerable effort for, to support our students during the global pandemic. I also want to just highlight one of the things, whenever we talk about graduation rates, I think it's worth noting that we know that not all students graduate at the same time, at this, in the same way. And so one of those programs that we're very proud of is our Passages Transition Program. And so even though our students who go on to Passages walk in graduation with us and participate in all the graduation events, they are continuing their education. So within that 97%, we, we do have some students that would have been higher if we counted those students in that way, but instead because they are continuing, they aren't counted as the four-year graduation rate. So that's one of the reasons we look at that seven-year graduation rate as well. So just so that you know, as it is appropriate for us never to be at 100% because there are students who are continuing their education and we, we want them to be part of that Passages Transition Program. So I just, I just want to make sure I highlight that as well. But again, it's still very high and continuing to be high. Secondary schedule redesign, just, just a reminder about where we are in the process. So we did start the process last fall with the Guiding Change Document with you and also surveys with families. The design team spent four months creating four options for consideration. We've had two rounds of feedback now with families, staff and students. And so they are taking that feedback again, doing another iteration of some options. And the earliest we would have anything for you would be the May study session. But next week is when I'll know more about that because it depends on what the design team does with the feedback and if they need more time before that May study session. So just, just, just to know, and we will send out notification before the options are presented. So people know to tune in to hear more about that. And then finally, I just want to remind you legislatively where we are. And I'm, I'm just highlighting three, three areas that I hope we'll continue to advocate for. And those of you at home, if you would like to also join us and in the audience. So we're just in terms of our advocacy issues, one, looking to increase the state portion of special education funding to reduce or eliminate the Special Education Cross Subsidy. And right now, our, our net cross subsidy is about $3,700,000. Instructional hours, that's the bill that we've been talking about for quite some time. So that is still, it's still in there. So reminding you that to support giving school boards the flexibility to expand that definition of instructional hours. And finally, the technology provision. Again, just a reminder that we do really do support quite a bit of that. The Senate file and the House file, I guess it's really just in the House now. We do support it in a lot of ways. There's just this little bit, there's some language clarification that needs to happen. And so we're advocating for that as well. So that is, that's my report.
Questions either bar. Okay, so next on the agenda are discussion information items. First with the board member calendar. Does anyone have anything they want to point out? I don't have anything. It's pretty straightforward for this coming month. And next we have the Girls Hockey Cooperative. Is Erin coming up?
Yeah, so Erin's going to come up. And I'm going to just kind of set the stage with the document that he is going to be using to guide the discussion. Are you able to pull that up? So what you, oh, there it is. What you see here. Maybe, can we make that a little bit bigger? So what you're going to see here is a guiding change document. Again, as a reminder, we're going to use these more and more to make really clear a decision-making process and to give guidance from the board before, so that Erin has, in this case, Erin has some parameters and some ways to, to get your guidance as he pursues this. So on the left, and I did share this with you earlier, on the left is really our context and a current reality, the why, why we're talking about the change. On the, on the right are the results, what we want from the change. And in the middle are the parameters. These are the guideposts or rules related to the potential change. So Erin's going to talk through. He's, he's got this started. He's going to talk through what it is that we've gotten here. And then if you have things you want added, clarified, this is your opportunity to give him that feedback so that as he moves forward, he's got that feedback from the board. Okay?
Thank you.
Yeah.
Do you want me starting on the left side then?
Well.
Yeah, okay. So context, why, why we're here? So the declining numbers that we currently have at our high school level, I will add that our youth numbers, if we look to our very youngest levels, we are very healthy. That does not change our.
Before you go, there are a number of people in here who know the context. Can you just do a little intro because of what it is we're actually talking about with this Girls Hockey Cooperative?
Yep. So we're, we're talking about the opportunity to pursue a cooperative agreement with another high school for girls hockey for the 2022, 23 school year. And as, according to the State High School bylaws, that is a minimum of a two-year agreement to start with.
Thanks, thanks for the context.
Yep, thank you. Appreciate the guidance. So just noting that right now, we do have 27, 28 skaters coming back. Our youth numbers at the lower levels, youngest levels are very healthy. That is worth noting. We do not have, that we're aware of, a goaltender at the secondary level to play next year. So as noted, I also, before I go any further, I just, I want to thank and validate everyone who spoke today. I appreciate everything and all very valid concerns and perspectives are valued. And I'll also add that there is not, going through this process, there is no one that wants to end up in a situation where we're pursuing a cooperative agreement. But I'm also looking to make sure that we have opportunities for our student athletes to compete, whether that be through a youth association or at the high school level. So that is the goal. We do have a strong history of community sport for hockey. The current climate in girls hockey Minnesota, there are 65 AA girls hockey programs. There, of those 65 programs, 24 of them are cooperative agreements. We do compete at the double A level in girls hockey. Often I get asked, how come our boys compete at the single A level, our girls compete at the double A level? The reality is, is that because there are so many cooperative agreements on the female side, our enrollment has pushed us into the bigger pool of schools as far as enrollment goes. So that is often a point of curiosity for our, our stakeholders. There are 112 schools, excuse me, 112 schools represented on those 65 teams right now that competed the last year. It is projected that the number of double A schools could go as low as 60 for the next school year. And I'm just giving that context that our situation and numbers at the high school level is not unique. I'll also add that the trend of losing female athletes is not necessarily unique to hockey. If you look at the Metro East Conference and the levels of play we have in girls basketball or softball, it's almost half of what it would have been a decade ago on the girl's side. I don't have an answer for that, but it is a concern. And again, not just unique to our community itself. What we're looking for is, we're looking for a 912 cooperative agreement that exists and provides our student athletes a sustainable opportunity to participate and compete. This would allow us to have a stronger partnership with our youth programs in targeting the development of our players, both socially, emotionally, tactically, physically, skill-wise, sports-specific, all of that. Our, our students have, we want them to have a sense of pride when competing and, and we understand. And we also want our girls, our young athletes striving to be Zephyrs. We, we don't want next year to compromise in the sense of pride and opportunity that is created. So when we're looking for a partner, we don't want to have a situation where one school is highlighted over the other. We're looking for a partner that has the same, same goals as we do. And we want our, our students playing at an age and skill appropriate level. And a cooperative agreement would give us that opportunity for the next two school years. So some of the parameters that we have to follow to get there, we are going to ensure that we have opportunities available for our girls to play at either the youth or high school level. Financing the program with a partner school or community using a fair share model based on the number of participants from each school. We do have to follow the bylaws from the State High School League in forming a cooperative agreement, which means that we need permission from each school board. We will need permission from the other. We will need permission from the other section opponent schools, ADs to form that cooperative agreement. And if we're going to compete in a conference, we need permission from the other school ADs in that conference. A cooperative agreement can be dissolved, dissolved by either school at any point in time after two years, and they should be reviewed by each school every two school years. I'll add that any healthy cooperative agreement, the goal should be to dissolve the, the cooperative agreement when the programs are healthy to, to be able to exist on their own.
Erin, does, does anyone have questions? Kevin?
I think you did a little bit of answering my question already, but so that I am clear, it would be our intent, I mean, you, it sounded like we had a a healthy program younger, and so there's an anticipation of more student athletes coming up and being available to play so that maybe this co-op could dissolve.
That would be the goal.
You see that trend or, or too early to say?
The numbers we have in the youth association at the youngest levels are, are healthy. When we talk about having a vision or a plan, we need to make sure that we're retaining those, those student athletes. We, and without retention, we can't. That has to be our, our goal and our purpose of having a cooperative agreement is to ultimately end up, end up back with our own high school hockey program again.
So Erin, I have a follow up question to that. If we enter into a co-op, is that for all grade levels or would it just be high school? And then we could still be developing that younger, young, those younger grades to the association or what's the vision?
Yeah, so.
Program?
In an optimal situation, we'd be collaborating with our, and I, we have been collaborating with our youth association. And our, when we find a partner school, likewise, them collaborating with their youth association. Make sure that we have places for all of our 15 U and high school aged eligible athletes to play. Does that answer the question? Okay.
And you mentioned you're looking for a partner that has the same goals so that one school isn't highlighted over the other or the players from each team are equally highlighted. If you don't find a partner that meets that description, would you choose to go with, choose to not go into a co-op? If, if you didn't feel like it was the right partner?
We're in a, to be frank, we're in a very tough position because we're not in a position to have our own program next year without a cooperative partner.
So you're looking at a number to find who is that best fit?
Correct.
Ellie?
I'm just gonna take a deep breath here because I have a long history in this. And I really want to see an opportunity for all girls to be able to play hockey first and foremost. And I think what we have here is a ton of great athletes and families all passionate about wanting that. That's, I think, what we have in common is everyone wants to see opportunities for these girls. What has been a struggle for so many years is that we have struggled with meeting the needs of athletes that are potentially at one end of a spectrum versus the other end of a spectrum. And that our numbers have made it difficult to meet the needs of both of those families and players. And at the 15 U level, at the youth level, it's been really difficult because in the past, we haven't known up until the 11th hour, who's going to be on that youth program team, depending on who the high school ends up taking for that high school hockey team at JV or varsity. And so it's left the youth program reeling in not knowing what, whether we're going to have a team, where those girls going to go. We developed a co-op with Tartan a few years back, simply based on the fact that we were not going to be able to have a team. You know, you heard from some parents who said that was a great experience. You know, I, I think that there's a lot of, a lot of factors into this and there's not really an easy answer. I, ultimately, I hope that we find an opportunity for all of those girls to play at the right level. As a former high school hockey coach, I know that I struggled when there was an eighth grader trying out for a varsity level team. And was that the right level, skill wise, emotionally in a locker room with the girl who's 17, 18 years old? Physically, and also I worry a little, a lot actually about the safety issue. With, if we don't have a goalie who can play at the double A high school level and someone ends up there because they get moved up and they're not the, that's really not what they want, but that's to help out the team. Is that a safety issue for that athlete? Or is it a safety issue if there's a student who's not a goalie and we don't have a goalie? And that person now has to play instead of forward or defense, they have to put on the goalie pads and play goalie. I worry about the safety issue of that and the experience, the overall experience for the athletes. And so I guess ultimately, I hope that we find what works best and that we ask a lot of questions about who would be our right partner if we were to co-op, where would that be? Can girls get to ice time where that is, is there an opportunity for girls who are 17 and 14 and, and, and all of those things? And then I guess the other thing is what this has been a problem. And I'm going to say problem lightly because it's just been something because we are a smaller district. Well, we, this has been ongoing with this group of girls for many years that we've struggled with what's going to happen when they get to this age or that age. And, and you know, I guess I just really hope that we can make sure that there's opportunities for these girls and that there's not a girl who has, doesn't have a place to play. And again, at the right age level and skill level. And I guess I'll say lastly, that you have a great community of hockey parents who are going to stand behind you and support you. And I heard questions earlier tonight and for us to explore all the things to really grow a program from little kids at age six all the way to high school and how those, those, those partnerships can work together and how the youth can support the high school and the high school can support the youth vice versa. And so I think we've been having a really hard time. So what I'm worried about is how fragile our program is right now when one family chooses to move out of the district and has caused a big uproar, potentially we need a co-op. So I guess that's, I don't know if that's a comment, question or all of the above, Erin, but those are my thoughts that there's, there's a lot of us to, a lot of things for us to look into. And ultimately making sure we find the right fit for our athletes.
Are there any things in terms of the parameters? And so when you look at the parameters of the guiding change document, are there any things that you would like to add to it or clarify with Erin before he continues to look into this?
Put it back up. Patrick? I really appreciate the, the document. And I think you've covered the points that, and you've highlighted them in your presentation. I guess the only thing I would say is just, you mentioned the cooperative agreement will be reviewed every two years and maybe expand on what maybe set a goal of, or a vision of what we want, want to look like down the road. Which is, you know, it doesn't have to be as detailed, but maybe do we want, do we want to see if this is the, the path forward for years to come? Or do we want to look at, this is a, this is a piece of a bigger picture so we can build our internal program?
Really good question. So, and Kelly, if you want to add, after. So a, a very healthy relationship with the, the youth association is critical to, to having a healthy high school program. And ideally, you know, you need 30 skaters and, and three goalies is a healthy high school program. You can have a high school program with two goaltenders. You can have as many as five goaltenders and, and get enough minutes for goalies and that. And you can have as many as 40 skaters. Ideally, you don't want to go more than 36 skaters. That is the goal where we'd like to get to. Now, where, where you're polling or how you're filling your roster as far as age wise goes, that could vary depending on, again, what is, is needed and what levels of play we want to offer at the youth association. So, and that's where that relationship is critical.
Um, I want to, I think Lucy had her hand raised. Sorry. When that, when he puts up the document, I can't see everyone, so I hope I'm catching you. Are you, did you have a question, Lucy? Oh, there you go. You're on mute.
Thank you, Petra, for putting it back on screen for my question. I've had a couple and I've been overlooked, so I appreciate you noticing this time. Um, so Erin, I appreciate the document as well, and I'm wondering two things. Kelly started to dance around the edges of the seventh, eighth grade girls and what that means in an agreement like this. Are we truly limiting this to only high school? And what does that do for students who have played up in the past? Is that part of this, this agreement or not? And then the other piece that was happening a lot prior to COVID, Julie and I and you went to the inside out coaching experiences that are super important. And we're talked about a lot as a board in terms of thinking about the purpose of high school sports. And how does that philosophy play into this document and potential agreements?
Great question. So I'll start with the inside out program and, and the approach that education based athletics are extension of the classroom. And we really see this as the seventh period of the day. And it is important to make sure that if and when we end up with a cooperative partner, that that philosophy is at the core of that experience. And through that building character through sport, we also have to acknowledge that the number one reason why kids play sports is to have fun. And when, when any of us reflect back on our athletic experiences, you can think about certain games. You probably don't remember the scores. You might remember the games you won and lost. You, I doubt you remember who scored the goals unless it was you. And it's very unlikely. You, you remember those, those moments with your friends. And I acknowledge that moving into cooperative agreement, we're going to be making new friends, but we won't necessarily be competing with just our classmates in that. And, but we still have an opportunity to learn and grow as people through that process. The competitive balance is not a reason within the state high school rules to form a cooperative agreement. But I also have to acknowledge that if we're in a situation where we're asking a, a student athlete to suit up as a goaltender for the first time, that we are not going to have the opportunity to have those joyful experiences of winning games. Uh, nor would it be ethically sound to put a, a kid in that that doesn't, hasn't developed that skill set too. So kind of getting back to the, we do want character based and, and in the inside out approach to be there at the core of this experience. And I apologize, Lucy, what was the first question?
So before we go there, can I do a follow up to that that you just shared, Erin?
Absolutely.
So is that something that should be added to the guiding change document? That there is that philosophy that guides not only us, but the agreement?
Yes, for sure.
Okay.
Parameters then?
Yes.
Thank you.
Um, and the second question was what Kelly was sort of talking around a little bit. And the board has had long discussions about many times is the playing up policies and what that would mean for extremely talented youth who would have the opportunity potentially to play up. Because is this truly a nine, 12 or is this still a seven, 12 kind of thinking?
So that, that has to be gone over, but in reality with hockey and girls hockey, a healthy program would be nine, 12. Our ninth graders still have 15 U eligibility. There are some programs in the state that their numbers are healthy enough where their, their high school programs are 10, 12. And they have a 15 U team that has to cut. And those programs cut down to the JV to fill out JV rosters. That's, that's, you have to have very strong numbers across all levels to be in that situation. Now with any varsity program, the goal, there is always the goal to plan, prepare and play to win. So if we have extremely talented seventh and eighth grader that can play, compete at that level and contribute to a varsity team, it would be appropriate to trust in that coach to put them in that situation.
Thank you.
Do we have anything in place, Erin, that if an eighth grader per se makes the varsity team, that the rest of that eighth grade group would have to be moved up as well? Is there anything in place about that?
So right now, our practice is, is that if we pull up a middle schooler to a high school program, that we are not cutting high school student athletes to make room for that middle schooler on a lower level team. So lower level in hockey, there's two levels at the state high school, there's JV and varsity. And volleyball, there's four levels, there's varsity, JV, B and nine. So if it's, it's easier to talk about it when there's more than two levels. So I'm going to use volleyball as an example to pull up a middle school athlete for volleyball. And if we wanted to have that middle school athlete play JV, we would not be cutting any other high school athletes to make a spot at a lower level for that student athlete.
I guess the parameters that I was asking about on the parameters would be if what are our numbers of student athletes that are eligible for the youth level to still remain there? Well, versus the high school program, what would we have left? I guess I don't know if that fits under parameters or the.
So tell me, tell me what the big.
I'm anticipating nine, nine freshmen who would have 15 U eligibility left next year.
Those are the, the number, okay, so I'm just going to help with this. So pull it, pull it up a level because you don't want to get, you don't want to put the numbers in here because we know that the numbers are going to be like, what is it that you're trying to get at in terms of a guiding principle of what you're looking for?
Age eligibility for high school versus youth program? So is that?
What is that? What do you want from it? So what's the parameter that you want him to consider?
Um, I guess I'm looking for the structure of high school. I guess I'm looking for student athlete numbers needed for the high school program to make it run versus is there a place for them at the youth level? I don't know if I'm asking that appropriately.
Yeah, so, so think about it a little bit more. So if it's just a question that you're curious about, that's not necessarily, that's not in here. But the parameters are, you're saying as a board, we want you, you know, these are some of our guidelines. And so that's a curiosity as far as I know so far. Maybe there's something different that I don't understand.
Yeah, I'll think through it.
Okay.
Definitely get back to you. So again, I don't think that this is necessarily, this doesn't go here on the parameters, but is it okay for me to continue to ask a question? That, my question, I guess, would then be, could we potentially, could we survive if we restructured this, the process we have to maybe not have a full program where you're saying a varsity and a JV? Could we survive with just one team? Is that even possible? And the second flip side to that, the opposite side of the spectrum is by not having the programs with a JV and varsity, who are the families that we will lose? You know, if, if we're not able to do that. So if, you know, if we don't offer a program next year because we don't have a goalie, how many athletes are going to be forced to find somewhere else to play? I guess I just want to know what that looks like.
If, if we don't have an opportunity for our female hockey players to play high school hockey next year, I have 28 players, students looking for somewhere to play hockey.
I'm not a question necessarily. I, I guess I really applaud this approach that looking at this because it's taking, it's a pretty complicated, from what I heard tonight from our speakers and various emails we've gotten, it's a pretty complicated process and to decide which way to, it's going to best, because I think the bottom line is what's going to be the best approach serve the most of our student. serve the most of our student athletes. And that's what we're here for. And so I applaud the process of getting, trying to put all these thoughts out so that we can work through them in a way that does carry forward our best attempt to have a program. I'd be interested in also figuring out, because you, you mentioned that there was a trend of female student athletes declining across a number of sports. So I'm curious if we, you know, if that's something we could kind of figure out and untangle so that we don't have, you know, maybe we can get ahead of it possibly for other sports. I would quite honestly like to know because I here to this point and not being a hockey parent, so I'm not very close to it. I'll be fully honest here, but I applaud the enthusiasm. That's great. As I thought that girls hockey was like the thing. I mean, it was just going. And then now I'm learning that it's not. And I'm just curious about the trends of why some of our female student athletes fall off. And if there's something more we can do at the earlier grades to say, and I'm kind of guessing there's probably a lot of work that has happened, but I is there more that we can do on the retention side of things?
That could be something we could come back with later and talk a little bit more about. Julie.
Um, yeah. So I echo Kevin as someone who is not in the hockey world, but I appreciate the document. I, I empathize with the parents. I'm, you know, in, in the comments that are made and the, the, the talks tonight. That it seems like this is a surprise to them, like they hadn't heard about it. And, and that as a board member frustrates me, yet I don't feel I have any expertise in helping really solve this problem except to encourage you and support you in in trying to improve the relationship with the girls hockey association. So that some, you know, or any of the associations. So we're not caught in the situation again. You know, I, I did like Ms. Edwards idea of having a vision for what this looks like for the future. You know, I, and then, and the board really can't do that, but I would assume the girls hockey could do that. And I just want you to work with them because I hate seeing any of the opportunities taken away for the female athletes. You know, it's, it's heartbreaking to think of all the hours these girls have put in. And we want them to have the opportunity. So I, you know, I, that's my only comment is, is work with them because they're the ones that know. I mean, Kelly understands, but the rest of us don't. So I, you know, we want it to be a positive experience. And I, it sounds like this up and down throughout this throughout the girls careers and it sounds like it shouldn't have surprised anybody that this happened if they were going without a goalie or if it was just a couple of kids that left and, and then were left in this situation. But I just monitoring I, the relationship should be stronger.
No.
Our next steps.
It, it is identifying that school that's appropriate fit. And you do, and we are having discussions on numbers as far, and not just high school numbers, but numbers at the youth level projecting what is needed and, and what opportunities we can offer.
So can I just add, you put in the email to parents today, some specifics. So can you?
Yeah. Do you have that?
The next steps, identify a partner school with you, with a mutual agreement to what you're talking about here. And you actually talked about this already approval from each school district, school board, approval from each school competing in Minnesota State High School League, section four LA girls hockey, and then approval from competing conference schools. So those are the steps. But specifically from you, there's no vote tonight. This was brought for your discussion so that you could add again to the document to give Erin any further direction that he needs as he's going forward. And so we've gotten a little bit of that already. And so now he's going to continue on, but he will be coming back to ask for a vote. Assuming you find a partner, correct?
Thank you so much for really good presentation and being so thorough.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda are action items. We do not have donations and grants for approval tonight, so we will move to approval of policy 790. That's the post issuance debt compliance policy.
Yep. And I'll just, and if you have any questions for Jeff, he's here, but I haven't had any questions. Excepted his initial presentation of this policy, this is our final reading. So that is why it's an action item now. And we're, as we're asking for you to approve policy 790.
Do I have a motion for approval of policy 790?
Almost.
By Kevin, do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Julie, a discussion. Any discussion? Okay, then let's, we will move to a roll call vote, please.
Julie McGraw.
Hi.
Stacy Stout.
Hi.
Evan Donovan.
Aye.
Lucy Payne.
Aye.
Kelly Regan. Aye.
Motion carries. Next is the transportation contract for FY 2324. Jeff.
That's supposed to be for 2223?
2223, 2324.
Oh. For next year as well, next school year as well.
Yeah.
Okay.
Are you looking at, yeah, I'm here. It's FY 23.
Just on the agenda.
Oh, okay.
It says FY 2324.
On the agenda, but you continue.
Yes.
Getting all confused. So we received proposals for transportation services, April 7. I just tell you, we felt pretty fortunate to have two contractors respond. So I know when we had our, our pre-bid, pre-bid meeting, we might've had seven, six, seven contractors. We knew they wouldn't all propose an RP, but or give us a proposal, but we ended up with two. I'm going to step aside, have Arnold Viding's here. I think he's probably been before the board in the past. So he's our transportation consultant and can I give you a status report on, on where we're at? So we're probably down to one contractor, but I'll, but Arnold, take it one.
Members of board, superintendent, thanks for the opportunity to update you on our processes. Jeff alluded to, we entered into a process, started a process in March to seek proposals for student transportation for the district going forward. That opening was April 7th. Two providers were here tonight to inform you that through our discussions following April 7th, which included full review of both parties proposals, direct discussions to clarify their proposals, ask questions, exchange information, make them aware of district expectations related to student transportation services here. We're here tonight to in, in the, in the situation that our current service provider has not been able to obtain a facility that's suitable to operate from going forward. They, their current facility, they were notified. I believe we had official notification in December that their current facility was, was not available to them going forward past the end of the school year. So that was a central focus for our discussions with Illinois Central during this time. Again, at this time there have not been able to find a suitable service for operations. So on that basis, the district were asked or we've notified Illinois Central that, that their proposal is not acceptable and proposal that, that the district can, can go forward with. So we're here tonight to ask your direction or seek your direction in naming first student as the service provider for this district effective August 1st of 2022. With your anticipated direction tonight, our focus over the next couple of weeks is really, really two main, main focuses. First of all, reviewing, establishing drafting and creating a contract likely very similarly to our current contract to present to the board for, for review and approval. And then also focus boots on the ground focus of the transition process that, that we're in, we're, we're just about in May. With a contract date of August 1st, we have nine months or three, 90 days, three months to work with first student to make sure that they're ready to, to hit the ground running, ready to provide service that the district expects going forward. So with that, we're, we're looking for, for that direction from you this evening.
Kevin.
The transportation bus transitions, my experience can be challenging. What type, I guess there's two things. One is what kind of an increase as a percentage roughly can we expect with the new provider? Do we know be close to that being able to say, yeah, we're going to have this kind of an increase?
Um, I, I will just, we're going to pay more. We know that. What, what we're asking the board to do is give us authority to go back and do, this is different than the sealed bid, sealed bids. So we can, once we select for a student, we can go back and do direct negotiations. So wouldn't want to say a percent. I mean, obviously they had one in their contract, but we want to go back and negotiate. And I can just guarantee we're going to pay more than we are in the current. Cost of diesel is probably through the rough, but and then just the idea of trying to have some some way that we can try to hold them to the contract because again, I, I know that we've had some bumps in the road in the past. So I'm sure you're all over this, but I just wanted to reiterate maybe the idea that we we've, I mean, we've seen our neighbors to the east and the problems they've had and St. Paul's had them. So again, I think, thank you for the work you're doing to, to line somebody up because I know it's a challenging, challenging thing to do.
And that, that will be the focus of our discussions in this short period of time to establish the contract. And very clear and direct discussions, both with their, at all levels really of their team. First student is a national company. First student has, it provides service in many districts here in the metro area. There are, there are some benefits that the district may receive, certainly not unlike some of the benefits that, that the district received through the current service provider of being a, an operator at a scale that when a particular location might be experiencing some challenges that other near locations can support, whether it's driver support, bus aid, support, those kinds of resources. So that's a level that, that, that really is a benefit to, to having first student. But obviously our, our focus will be defining clear expectations and then doing everything that we can, you know, that our department, transportation department can do partnering with them to make sure that they're hitting, hitting their steps in process, including hiring, including attracting current, current drivers that are servicing the district, making sure that they, they're welcome to stay. You know, they, first student would have their hiring processes. But that's again, that, that's an example of the discussions that we're, will be having over the, the, the next couple of weeks. It's my anticipation that, that perhaps at the next two weeks at the work session, that there'll be additional detail on, on this, perhaps even a contract to, to bring for review.
Kelly.
Glad you mentioned the possibility of encouraging the current bus drivers to apply for these positions because many of our kids have connected with the bus drivers and we just went through a bus transition with a new company a few years ago and learning the routes and all of those things. So that was sort of my, my wondering or question before we got here. So thanks for addressing that. I think that that many kids have great relationships with their bus drivers and, and encouraging them to stay here, I think would be great.
And I, I can't jump too far ahead because some of these are points of discussion, but certainly for a student has expressed a very strong desire to retain all the employees that are currently serving the district.
Well, as first student was our carrier six years ago and we went through the hard transition. I just, I applaud you for at least finding someone because it was looking bleak.
These are challenging times.
Yes.
Not unlike every area of education and many aspects of our economy, but certainly bus operations in the past two years, I think, I, I hear, I hear parent comments and I think I hear more parent comments now about their appreciation of their driver. Or their paraprofessional that's on, on the vehicle working with their student in, in transportation home and to home and home to school and the school to home. So.
What you're saying, the collaboration between other districts, because we're so small. Having that support will be really crucial for our district. So thank you.
I just want to say thank you. I appreciate, first of all, the year, this year that we didn't have any gaps. And so I know a lot of districts struggled with that. So really appreciate all the work that went into that and really appreciate our drivers and hope that if they want to continue on, that they will be able to. So I appreciate that being part of this equation. And thank you for all your efforts on this. I think Julie summed it up perfectly. It's, it's quite challenging and we're very happy that you were able to have, have one that you could present. So with that, I think we'll move on to vote.
We have to, we have to make a motion to, to authorize this or were we just discussing?
Asking you to approve, giving us authority to go. No, we are asking you to name first student as the preferred carrier. And then that gives us authority then to go.
I'm, I'm going to read this. It says administration requests board to name first student as the student transportation service provider effective August 1st, 2022 and directs administration to enter into negotiations with first student to reach a contract agreement. That's what we're requesting.
So moved.
By Kevin.
Aye.
Seconded by Kelly. Roll call vote, please.
Hi. Stacy Stout.
Aye.
Evan Donovan.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. And now we will move on to OH Anderson, end of year calendar. We have Suzie Prater with us.
Yes. And so Suzie and I are going to kind of tag team this. Unfortunately, we did not practice ahead of time. So we're just trusting that we've got this.
We got eye contact.
So you heard a lot from Suzie at our work session where she went into great detail about all that needs to happen in order to to get OH ready for the facilities project. So we're going to go over a few things. You had some questions. We're going to clarify a few things since, since our work session in this PowerPoint for those people who haven't seen it before, it is linked in, in board book. And at the end of this PowerPoint, we kept the slides that Suzie used. So if anyone wants to go back and look at them to see what we discussed at the work session is in this PowerPoint. Okay. So so just as a reminder again, so you approved the facilities improvement project for OHA that will include updating buildings, mechanical equipment and systems with, and it's a, it's an enormous project. It will provide better heating, cooling, temperature control and air quality at OHA. And it will be a significant approve improvement. So timeline wise, June 13th, the demolition begins, 14th, construction begins. And by August 19th, we will have substantial completion. We, we meant, we talked about that again today during the facilities meeting. So, and then we'll have some time for unpacking. So, so to understand, so during this project, all school items need to be removed. Storage cane containers will be outside the school. The playground, fields and parking lot will be closed. So I'm going to, do you want to take this one? So I'm going to, do you want to take this one, Suzie? Here you go.
Yes, so the facilities project can't start until everything is, everyone and everything is out of the building. So our scope of our work at O H Anderson is we need to pack and move everything out of the school building. And that's everything that's in a cabinet, filing cabinets, shelves, every common space as well. Storage units cannot be staged along the exterior part of our parking lots until school is out because we need to have places for buses and teachers to park and all of that and for our bus lane. So we don't really have this storage for that. Also, within the school, we don't have storage spaces just to pack boxes because school will be going on. And my priority and our teacher's priority is to continue the learning through the end of the school year. I want people to know that some of the preparation has already begun and I'll go through that in a little bit as well. One of the questions that came from the board is can a moving company come in and pack and move everything at O H A instead of having teachers and staff do that? We did meet with our moving company, Adam and myself. They do pack and move home relocations, but they do not offer the service for this big scope of a project. And it is due to the staff. They don't have staff to do that scope. I asked them if we did request a bid. They said just an average is three times of what the price is of what we're paid for our moving company. So that is what we're looking at is our moving company simply moving the items from our classrooms to a moving trailer and moving them back to be staged back in the same places. One of the things that our challenge is, is how do we pack our schools so we're ready for this by June 10th? And I just want people to understand our teacher contract obligations. Really that scheduled time is the duty day when teachers are at school. That is the only mandatory time. We don't, we would have to pay people if it was outside of that time. Also Friday, June 10th is their last day of their contract. So that is kind of the parameters we're looking at. One of the things that we have provided is some time on April 8th to begin purging is one of our first things and then packing. And then all of our May committee meetings have been canceled and building level staff meetings so that we can provide that time for packing and purging. We are using the National Honor Society, PTO and parents to help us with the packing. So that will all be a process too, as we go underway with this. Our goals, and this is really what my goal is as a leader, is to really to maximize learning at O H Anderson so that we can concentrate at the end of the school year and that learning continues and we make sure that kids are where they're at. And then when school is ended, we can turn and pivot to that packing project. We want to have our school packed and ready to go on time so that construction is on schedule. And we want to have our ready, our just building ready to go because our goal is really to have that. So we're ready to start the fall. So our proposal is of three days at O H Anderson. Stopping, not having students, the last day of school we're proposing would be June 6th. And June 7th, 8th and 9th would be school packing and technology removal. And we'll speak to that in a moment, the scope of that. One of the things we want to provide families is free childcare and organized activities. So we would be providing that during the school day on the 7th, 8th and 9th here at the District Education Center. That is where MAC, our Mata Me Dai Adventure Club will be held too. So our paraprofessionals would be supporting kids here during those days for families.
I just want to clarify one thing for everyone is that we are, we feel like we can cover that based on this fall, this fall in terms of families who signed up for childcare during the assessment days. So I just, but we will be, we will have some limitations. So we're hopeful that we can provide it to everyone who wants it. But I just would want you to know there, we only have so much space and so much staff. But we're assuming that we have a little more, we made, we made space for more room than what we had, what we had people sign up for in the fall. Correct. I just would want to be clear about that.
And the other piece is we'd be providing transportation. They'd be on the regular bus routes here, so that helps with families as well. And then also some food from our nutritional services if needed. So background information, just so everyone knows, when Wildwood went through their move, they had four days to accommodate that packing. During that assessment days, that first week of school, we provided that free childcare and supported families. And we're going to use a very similar system with that really during our school hours. And then I just want people to know we are still exceeding the instructional days and hour requirement by the state of Minnesota. So this is our proposed timeline, last day of school, Monday, June 6th. June 7th, 8th and 9th will be our packing. The big piece also is that technology removal, which I'll share with you on that as well. And we're hoping to have a packing party with volunteers on that evening as well. What we're looking at is final school packing. Teachers at the end of the year do grade entry. They have a lot of end of the year tasks, technology removal, all of that will be done on the 10th. And then the 10th, 11th, 12th, they will be beginning that moving into the storage containers. And then demolition should be ready to start on the 13th. And as Barb had said, our hopefully substantial completion on the 19th. And so that during that welcome back week, we'll have some time to unpack and kind of get our classes ready to go.
And so at this point, I was, I was not going to go into the details because you went through all of this unless, but I have the slide. So if you had any follow-up questions from the last time we met for the work session, we do have these, we do have these slides. So if you want us to go back to those, but I was, unless there were things you wanted to highlight about technology.
Yeah, so I do, I do want to highlight the technology so people can peruse this slides. I did take pictures of kind of the scope of what needs to be done. But I think the biggest piece is to think about all of the technology that needs to be removed in our school, including security cameras. It's our, Patrick can probably say the right words for all of the things, but speakers, projectors, sound systems, everything needs to be removed because if you think we're having all the ventilation and all the ceilings removed, so we need to remove all of that. And so there are some jobs on the next slide that you can kind of see. This is just the scope of it, the number of items. And then the next slide will kind of show, there are certain things that teachers will have to remove. Our district technology department will be removing things. And then we also are having a vendor to come through to remove those items as well. And we just need to be very thoughtful of making sure everything stays safe so it's ready to go back up in the fall.
Are these slides on our website? Just since the study session, this was covered really thoroughly, but.
Yeah, so how, this will be, this, so typically in the, in the e-news, our video and our slides go out in the e-news, sorry. Or no, this will go out in the announcement. I'm looking to our communication specialist about the way we do this. But a couple of slides back about the dates. I saw all the things that are being removed for technology and I'm wondering if, because we've seen all of this and talked about it at length, but I'm wondering about the grading piece on the June 10th. Will that be difficult once all of the wifi and things and projectors and all of that? Patrick shaking his head.
Patrick already has a plan. So the items that can be removed are really those teaching items. So you think about the smart board, some of those things, but teachers will still have access to the internet to do their job, their desktops, all of that. So that will all be available at that time. It's really kind of staging out all of the other items first, and then they'll be working on that after teachers' grades are done.
Lastly, I'll add on this that I really appreciate the attention to, you've said this many times, that learning will take place all the way up until the end of the school year and that the packing really truly will not happen until students are out of the building. So that it's a place that seems to me like, feels like school, looks like school, acts like school. And then these days would allow for that to happen. And does that feel like adequate time then to make that happen if the learning takes place right until the end?
Yes, and that's where, you know, I was looking at what, what is reasonable time to get this scope? And I do believe it is. And we will have our regular closure and celebrations that we have as a school at the end of the year. So we're just making adjustments for that as well. But we want that to be our priority is teaching, learning, kind of that closure to the school year. And then we can kind of change our focus on getting our job done and getting everything packed up and ready to be out.
Well, thank you, Suzie. I, as you know, we had a lot of questions at the last meeting. I thought you covered it really well. You've been very thorough. This is a huge undertaking. I think it'll be well worth it for the life of our building and for the students and teachers. I really appreciate your commitment to ensuring there's no interruption to learning. I know that was a big concern and wanted to make sure, given the last couple of years, that we feel confident that our students aren't missing out on anything. And I appreciate you, your assurance on that. I also understand that you had a number of parameters to work within with teachers' contracts. Thank you for looking into if there was a possibility of a moving company. But it looks like you really landed on the best possible option. And as you know, I really struggled with ending school early. I didn't like the idea, but I can see, especially given how much there is in order to achieve this. So just really wanted to say thank you for your thoroughness and ensuring that all of those different aspects are, the details and, and the needs are met.
Thank you. And I do, on behalf of our whole school, we want to thank you for this project. So we are thrilled to have all of these improvements at O H Anderson.
I move that we adopt the O H Anderson end of year calendar.
By Kevin.
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Julie McGraw.
Hi.
Hi.
Kevin Donovan.
Hi.
Lucy Payne.
Hi.
Kelly Regan.
Hi.
Motion carries. Piece under action items, personnel.
So Nicole, oh, did she just step out? Out, she. Oh, okay. Yeah, I'll, oh, here she comes. Yes. Oh, sorry. Yeah, so this is the recommendation to do. I can do it for you.
Okay.
Want me to do it?
Yeah, I just don't have a thing in front of me.
Okay, I'll do it. I've got it. Okay, so what we have in front of you is a recommendation to approve contract status for licensed personnel moving from probationary status to continuing contract status for the 22, 23 school year. So that's the first one. We're looking for a motion. And you don't need to read everyone off, just if you could move that recommendation.
You have a motion for that recommendation to approve the contract status.
Second.
By Kelly, seconded by Julie. Roll call vote, please.
Hi, Casey Stout.
Hi.
Kevin Donovan.
Hi.
Payne. Hi.
Kelly Regan.
Hi.
Motion carries.
So the second one is the approval of the resolution to terminate and renew probationary teaching contracts.
By Kevin.
Oh, are you here now?
Yeah. I have, I have it now.
Okay.
She had the second one, so go ahead.
Roll call vote, please.
Hi.
Hi.
Kevin Donovan.
Hi.
Hi.
Motion carries.
All right, third one.
All right, here we go. The third one is the approval of the resolution proposing to place on unrequested leave of absence.
What's the process for this?
This is the proposal and that the meeting in May is when we actually do the placement. So there's two times for U L A. Yep.
So moved.
By Julie, do I have a second? Seconded by Kelly. Roll call, please.
Hi.
Casey Stout.
Hi.
Kevin Donovan.
Hi.
Lucy Payne. Hi.
Motion carries. Okay, now school board committee reports, please. We'll start with AMSD board. Oh, Lucy.
So AMSD met earlier this month. They have another meeting in a week, but the update was from M D E and was on the bold literacy plan, MTSS and CBE. It also included legislative update. Those slides are available on the AMSD website.
Next is Kelly with a M A F report.
So M A F this month started with a presentation, a mission moment where fourth grade teacher from O H A got to share about the impact of the wobble stools in his classroom, about how the highly popular with students and mentioned that he feels really great to be able to part of a district that supports his work. And so he shared about how excited the kids were about that. And previously it had to share these stools and so he was excited about that for his class. There were some new M A F board members that started with M A F as well. And so there's some introductions and getting to know one another. And then obviously Legacy Night coming up. And I believe, I could be wrong on this, I'm sorry, I thought I had this in my notes. I believe tomorrow is the last day to register or sign up for the Legacy Night. I'll have to for sure check my calendar, but I'm almost positive tomorrow and they had less than 100 tickets left. So buy your tickets, get out there. Down to 50 last I heard. Down to 50, okay. And so for the May 20th, M A F Legacy Nights at Seven Vines. So. See here, other pieces on M A F. Obviously lots of talk about Legacy Night and scholarships. And the scholarship committee shared about the requests of Mata Redi, am I saying that right? Mata Me, Mata Redi, Mata Redi?
No, Mata Redi.
Mata Redi, okay, I had that right. Mata Redi, I mean, that's how Siri says Mata Me Di, I guess. For the September 26th Fair at the Fine Arts, and that would be funding for books and supplies for that. And so that is coming this fall. So. Kate DeCamillo's coming.
Oh, nice.
Oh, yes, that's right.
Big deal.
Who writes Because of Winn Dixie? Yeah, so, yeah, so that's. Yeah, I mean, it's, it's a big deal. And that already 176 tickets were sold for that. And so, yeah, big deal and really exciting. So Barb, did I miss anything else? Matt, those are my notes.
Okay, I jumped in. Yeah, no, perfect.
And don't forget to give me for our gift or our auction item.
I got a big note to my sock right here.
Okay, don't leave that.
I won't, don't let me leave. And you're up next, Julie, I think, with MSBA.
So now is the time in the session when things are starting to happen and bills are starting to move and so our advocacy becomes even more important. May 23rd is the last day of the legislative session and the governor has said there will be no special session. So if you received the two potential draft letters this week, I had shared a special ed cross subsidy template with everyone from MSBA via Barb several weeks ago. And we're now asking for discussion on the advocacy letters that were sent out to everyone to have a look at. One of them is just special ed cross subsidy and our flexibility request from the legislature. And the other is, is more just about our flexible learning time. So Lucy, would you like to, would you like to interject your wisdom?
Thank you, Julie. So these are two letters that I've drafted for us to consider. And what I'm hoping we can do tonight is give Barb the authority to use these as a framework to write some letters on our behalf and advocate these last weeks of the session on behalf of the entire board, because that carries much more weight than the single letters we're all sending or the single letter she is sending, because I know she's advocating hard for a number of things and in constant communication with our legislators. But having it sent on behalf of the board makes a big difference. And this is just some language I've put together from our work during the session, but would like to authorize Barb through motion and to have the ability to send on behalf of the board the next three weeks, these two general ideas, either adding the instructional hour language to existing letters like they've done on the first draft, or sending drafts like the one I've attached to add weight just to the instructional piece, depending on the moment of context, because the context will change. Because the context will change every hour. And I think she needs the flexibility to be able to do that. And then our voice carries more weight than just the single voice.
Well, in reading the letters, I do feel that perhaps sending the template letter with our flexible seat time right now is fine. I fear that the template letter may not be read because it looks the same as all the other ones. So I appreciate the weight that the other standalone instructional hour bill has, because we do want to advocate for the special ed cross subsidy. So we want to do both, but we don't want our our letter to be ignored, because it's just like everybody else's. So our letter isn't different until the very end.
And I think the other important piece is that changing nature that we as a board can't get together every other day and say, well, now the legislature is working on this and they need this kind of communication. And so that's why I like the idea of authorizing Barb to do this based upon the context, but with these general parameters and context in mind, that's why I drafted the sample letters. But I fully trust Barb to tweak depending on what happens legislatively in conversations on the floor, depending if it needs to go to the education committees or it needs to go to the full floor people. I think that's important to give that flexibility so we don't have to gather again as things progress at the Capitol. I will say that in consultation with M S B A government relations team and national partners at Knowledge Works and others, they have recommended more of the second letter that doesn't include both issues to keep it really focused on the instructional hour piece. And so I appreciate the work M S B A is doing on the cross subsidy and agree that needs to be supported. And just think that it should be two separate letters, right? And so there is that piece where he keeps saying yes, cross subsidy. And we keep saying the piece that Patrick is helping us with so much around the technology and the data piece, but by having these separate letters, they sort of land in these different buckets. You know, as they count the number of people who are interested or advocating one way or the other, they don't have to say, well, it goes both places. It goes here. And so I think it's just much cleaner to go with a single letter, but I want to give Barb that flexibility because that context will shift and change.
Lucy, I think both letters are really good. Thank you for drafting them. Is M S B A, will they be willing to do, use the second letter in any instances or other school districts?
So Barb and I are part of two pretty important groups at the state level. One is the Innovative Superintendent's Group and the other one is the 21st Century Skills Group. And both those groups are interested in having some draft language to share with groups or individuals within those groups. And so I was fine to send it to those groups. M S B A has signed on with the other ed organizations and they're really pushing the cross subsidy as their main piece. And so I don't think they would push it out to everyone. I would provide it to them if people asked for it. I will also provide it to those who signed on to our resolution through the delegate assembly process. And of course, anyone who's interested, I know Barb is very well connected in our state to other superintendents and people who lobby at organizations and others. I'm sure she'll be sharing it that way as well. I hope she will be. I shouldn't speak on your behalf, Barb, but I hope you will. Feel free to do that as well. So that's how I read the current context, Stacy.
Well, I'm good with both letters being available for Barb's use. Does anyone else have any thoughts on it? Any concerns? Otherwise, I think we're just get ahead. Motion of yes.
I make a motion. I make a motion that we as a board will sign, have, give Barb the authority to sign our names, sign her name on behalf of the board and, you know, to show support for these two, three, two issues. Three issues, actually. I mean, she's doing it for the technology too, I'm assuming. So.
I've been for the technology.
Yes.
By Julie.
Second.
Julie McGraw, aye.
Stacy Stout.
Aye.
Kevin Donovan.
Aye.
Payne.
Aye.
Kelly Regan, aye.
Anything else Julie with your report?
You know what? Just at the last legislative updates, they just talked about the 500 years of experience we'll be losing at the legislature this year that are retiring. So that's a pretty big loss. And they encourage us all to get on board and start meeting the new people who will be representing us. That's it.
I've been sending those out electronically. Thank you, Leslie, for helping do that. The 916 Foundation had their, they had their annual gala thing. It was also at Seven Vines. Barb was there. I don't know if anybody else was there, but it was lovely. It's a lovely space. And so if the M A F event is anything like it, it'll be a great, great spot to have that. So it's not too late to donate to the 916 Foundation if you feel so inclined. They are always kind of the underdog that doesn't always get seen. So they're doing some really great work, Stacy. And I was went over to see their career tech program and we're just wowed by the work they're doing. And we're working on, it's Dr. Valerie Bo, superintendent's first review. So we'll be having that here soon. And like we've done so many times, developing the instrument for the evaluation is always the thing. But Mata Meedy, I should be proud because they have adopted much of what Mata Meedy has done in our review process. So that's 916.
Are there any other committee reports?
District Curriculum Advisory met in April as well and Jen Reichel did a fantastic job bringing that group together. We had a presentation from the Heritage Language. I'm not sure what they're called Heritage Language Center. Anyway, it was about the bilingual seals program. And that program is something that is state sponsored to award students a proficiency in a language other than English. And that students can participate in a standardized test to earn a seal on their high school transcript and earn college credits with many of the M S Q colleges. And they can earn different levels of seals. So they can earn a platinum seal. Were they at the advanced level, I believe. And Jen, please correct me if I'm making any mistakes here on the four different modalities of listening, speaking, reading and writing. Or they could earn a gold seal or a proficiency certificate for all those four modalities. And so student assessments can happen during grades 10 through 12. I missed anything? Platinum, top levels platinum, yeah. Also, so we got in small groups, talked about the benefits of of that and helping sustain, you know, students' home language. Being able to, you know, free up credits to be able to take other classes. Lots of benefits that we talked about in small groups and just a great presentation and and offering the ability for that group to ask a lot of questions as well. We then talked curriculum and talked about the schedule of different standard reviews in that cycle and the E L A has new standards that will be published in the fall of 20. No, that's not right. Yes, they were already published, but expected for implementation in 2526. And Jen went through all of the different areas and I won't, I won't go through all of those right now, but she made us aware of all of the different implementation cycles and what's coming. We spent a little bit of time talking about the fact that a year ago our district hired a new gifted and talented coordinator and how she's been partnering across the schools in the district to help with enrichment activities to make sure that all students have access to rigorous curriculum and education. So lastly, I think there was one more piece on that is that there's a content area that is up for curriculum review and that is right now in E L A that right now they're doing some work on standards and unpacking those standards. And there were some questions about social studies because there's been some pause or holding on that because those social studies standards are being sort of redrafted and taking a look at what those standards will be. So just some updates on where we're at with that. And that was kind of the gist of the curriculum advisory and we could have probably stayed for another four more hours. So that's where we are with that one. I have Community Ed Advisory Council. We met on April 20th. Kate gave a report, MAC registration for summer MAC went went great. It's pretty much filled up. We have a new system for registering called the ELO system that apparently is something everyone loves. It's a lot of information, making the process a lot easier. The MAC is full with waitlist for the summer. A lot of youth enrichment programs. Make sure to check out the new catalog, Summer 2022, and get registered. Community Luncheon, Monday, May 2nd. Are there still spots open? Kirkwood BBQ will be providing food. The community garden filled up quickly with 38 enrollees. The garden should be up and running by May 9th. Youth Athletics, Boys Volleyball will begin in the month of May and they have a full roster. Spring Track and Field, there were over 120 students. That's always one of the bigger participation events. Food Truck Friday was last week. The next one is May 13th. So mark your calendars for that. Say it's not going to snow anymore after May 9th. I thought I heard her say. Yeah, hopefully. And last weekend was right of spring. No indoor pickleball this summer because of MAC utilizing the D E C, because there will be no childcare at O H Anderson. At the meeting, Jamie O'Hara and Janice Swanson each gave updates. Jamie is the School Age Care MAC Coordinator. And she has worked for the district for 24 years. So that's a long time for Jamie. And Jana gave an update on her marketing and it made me tired. So and you stole, you stole my big announcement with the September 26th Kate Di Camillo. So sign up.
Sorry.
Sign up. That's okay. Everyone's excited. And okay, what is Tolu, Chloe's last name, Bromeland? She announced she is our student representative on the Community Ed Board and she announced that the Wildwood Walk is going to happen again this year for the graduates. So that's exciting. So, so that is something everyone looks forward to. Yes.
I have one, one addition, if I may, on the Community Ed. Kate has taken a leadership role in many faces, which is trying to put on a wide broad spectrum of different programs. And we just had one. What day was that? Tuesday? Tuesday on homelessness in Washington County. And partnered with the St. Andrews Resource Center, which is doing some really amazing work on that. And I would encourage us on the board to dig into that a little bit more because Washington County is one of the expenses to get housing in Washington County, one of the highest in the nation. It is just daunting. The average rent for like a one bedroom apartment is 1,300 a month. And St. Andrews is really doing a lot of work, but it was great that Kate on the Community Ed highlighted a real thing in our, in our county. So, thank you.
Tonight we had facilities and Site Logic gave us a broad overview of their assessment of our facilities. You know, when they, when they first started, they honed in on O H Anderson and now they just came tonight and gave us a broad overview of our physical needs only. New book. So everyone can look forward to that. It'll be really good reading.
I'm going right home tonight to read it.
Yeah, yeah, lots of data. But they will be coming back with our large list, our 10-year facility plan for our June meeting. So we have it approved by by July 1st. And the last thing I just wanted to, I've showed this a couple of times, but Deb Driscoll didn't get inducted into the High School League Hall of Fame with Mindy Meyer along with Joe Maurer on Sunday. So congratulations again to Deb.
No, but I have one other. And I could, Lucy, did you have something with your virtual background? I couldn't tell if your hand went up. Lucy.
No.
No, okay, thank you. Go ahead. Sure. And then I have one.
No, and I'll just briefly. So our city leaders meetings, we, we get together with members of city council or city administrators to just kind of talk about what kind of projects that are happening in our in our communities that make up our district. And our main, I'll just say the main reportable thing, I guess, would be the road construction that's coming. And it's going to start soon. So it is going to affect our bus routes. Warner is going to, so we've got Warner Avenue is north, south there, just like a set just south of Maple, I think, is where it starts. And then we also have from Veterans Park South on 244. So over the bridge that is going to be a long project there. So there could be some alternate routes that will affect from school district perspective, that will affect our routing. But for the community, know that we will have, we will be out of commission for a while on that stretch. I don't know if there are other things to highlight.
It will take me a half an hour to get to the district office now.
Unless you ride your bike.
Unless I ride my bike.
There you go. It'll be a lot faster.
Yes.
Stoplight going in as well. Wasn't that part of the concern? And then some, some traffic calming by putting in those medians to allow some walkers across by, I think, Lincoln Town. Is that where it's coming across? And then also over by kind of near Aldi to get into Wedgewood Park there. So or closer, further up, but.
And then I have a committee report from the Gifted and Talented Advisory Committee that just met yesterday. Jen also leads that meeting and did a fantastic job as well as Laura Ward, who is our G T Coordinator. She gave an update on all of the activities happening at each school. And I know I mentioned this last time, but I I really want to highlight it again. Parents are very happy with the direction that our program's taking. It's, we are acknowledging it's been a rocky road for about six years and it's the improvement just in one year with Jen and Laura leading the program is noticeable. And people, there, there was a lot of feedback on things they still want to see. So there's still a lot of room for growth. But there's already been so many improvements and and just experiences that people really are are able to see and are certainly appreciating. So I just wanted to highlight that. It's, it's really great. And in fact, I, Jen shared something and I said, oh, I wish the entire staff, all the staff and all the board could hear her, her presentation. So maybe she'll be part of the showcase.
Oh, Jen, you'll be the showcase.
One woman show. No, I, again, I just, I just really appreciate their work. So.
I worry she'd make us clap or something. Activity.
She would have an activity or else. Yes. So anything else? So Kelly.
Really quick ones. I just wanted to mention that Kevin invited us to the Century College Futures in Bloom. Not a committee report, but we got to hear and he got to lead a breakout room on hearing all about the great things happening at Century College and in healthcare education. And it was just, it was, thanks for inviting us. It was really great to be a part of that.
Thank you for coming. It really meant a lot seeing fellow school board members in the breakout room.
And two, one other thing is that our board continues to learn. So I've been seeing Stacy and Paul in the M S B A Phase Three and Four trainings. We've been busy doing that in the evenings and, and yeah, so I've been seeing you all online too in that as well. So it was great.
With that, I think, motion to adjourn. Move by Kevin.
Second.
Second by Julie. Roll call vote please.
That sheet, okay. Julie McGraw.
Aye.
Stacy Stout.
Aye.
Kevin Donovan. Lucy Payne.
Aye.
Kelly Regan, aye.
Motion carries. We are adjourned.